Yes, you all rise. Pardon me.
I am Bryan, United States of America, and to be qualified for this case, my nation under God and the visible liberty of justice for all.
All right, thank you all. Just wanted to make a brief comment. Unfortunately Chairman Dickinson is out this evening. As you go on keeping in your folks' prayer, it's been pretty serious back issue, so he won't be with us tonight. Keep committing thoughts, please. This meeting has been appropriated according to all posting illegal newspaper of the Borough of Reni, with respect, and by posting the same on the boardroom board, I'm giving you school of felony. Jim, may I have your call, please?
Mr. Robinson, Almenes, here.
Here.
Haynall.
Yes.
Boushian. Mr. Wright. Holbertham. The Councilman.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Allford.
Here.
Gilbert. Mr. Stone.
Here.
And John Pettit.
Here.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the business of the upcoming meeting, please? Motion by...
Tony.
Seconded by Mr. O'Callaghan. On the new business, Mr. Bryan, you want to go over administrative procedure?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the question that I will discuss this evening briefly, procedures for administrative amendments to plans that we have approved in the past. Apparently, we have the board is coming in this evening to address a prior approval. Administrative amendments can be made to an approved plan if the amendment is de minimis in nature to the plan itself. In other words, it's not affecting the engineering or affecting any variances or waivers that the board would give. Typically, they may be for landscape designs, for the placement of signs on a premise, and maybe the composition of siding or things like that, colors, which can be done, which don't affect the approval process, but can be done without the applicant coming in and making full applications. Typically, those requests would go to the engineer for his opinion to see if they do materially affect the approvals that have been made. Usually, what I've done, or my custom in other jurisdictions that we represent, is to have the applicant make a letter application or a letter request with consideration. They come to the board, they probably already discussed the matter with either maybe a board member, or maybe with the engineer, or possibly the attorney, and then the board makes a determination if it's a de minimis adjustment to the approved plan. And then you would vote on it, and would become part of the final approval.
Thank you very much. And to that, I think what we'd like to do is go ahead and move on with Dean's amendment to his application. Do you want to talk forward? Just for everyone's application, Dean is a gentleman who is doing the site improvements on the old Olive Towne Uni on Columbus Road. He is putting a restaurant in, and Dean has requested that we take a look at some landscape architecture. He had spoken to Mr. Pettit regarding to that, and another minor change on his, on the building, actually. So, John, you would have him to just come in, and he then have to be a higher board so that it can be voted upon. I'm also getting receipt of two letters from Dean's neighbors that are adjacent to the property in support of these changes to his site plan.
Would you please raise your right hand? You solemnly swear a firm testimony that you're about to give this board tonight as truthful and accurate to the best of your knowledge.
Yes.
Would you tell me, the board, what your changes are?
Technically, a few changes, if possible. The first being, I'd like to extend the current look that we have here to the other side of the building. It's for two reasons, for visual perspective and to help insulate the building. It's basically what we're doing is infilling the space, we're not increasing the interior space. And the second request is there was some planning that we need to do on the side of the board's both neighbors. Neither one of them feels it's necessary to put it up, and they both have written letters to that yard.
Mr. Pettit, what did you, you have planned in particular if the trees were going to be redundant?
Yes, we went out to the site, Mr. Pettit asked me to come out and take a look at it. If the board recalls when this application was in front of the board, it's an existing commercial site, we're in residential, so we look to increase the buffering between those homes and the existing site, which is why the approval included some additional planning, some additional evergreen trees. Evidently, the residents, when Dean started doing construction, got concerned. They felt that what was out there was sufficient, they were satisfied with it, so he asked me to come out, take a look at it, and see if he could make that change. I looked at it with him, and I said, "I don't have the authority to allow that change to be made to the approval," and I suggest that he come back in front of the board, present it to the board, and get your opinion on it.
And just so you know, we did go out and take a look. Ron is a landscape architect. Ron Thornton, the president couldn't be here this evening, but he agreed with John that it was redundant, and that it was also going to be encroaching on the freeway where there's going to be cars going through behind the back of the building. So, does anybody else have any questions about it?
And it was really for the residents that lived next to it, you know, purpose, you know, that's why we thought the additional evergreen trees. Then, I thought is if you're satisfied with what's out there.
And the two letters that I have, Diane and Dean received of, are, one is from Stacy Florrie, and the other one is from Mr. Daniel McHugh regarding that change, support that change. Anybody else in the board have any questions before we take your call on this?
And just for favor, so for our resolution, what was the other change in, is the board aware of that? Is it cosmetic?
Yeah, to the front of the building, the original plans told for this side not to be touched, and we enclosed this side. I would like to enclose this side of the building, two reasons, like I mentioned, one for the aesthetics, and the other for the insulator that it's going to provide, so to close the front of the building. So, we're not changing the floor plan, we're not increasing the ceiling, it truly isn't cosmetic, and it's an infilling process, it's not structural at all.
So, none of these changes or amendments in any way expand the capacity of...
No, absolutely not.
As a point of qualification, so you're not going to be removing the asphalt as shown on the plans?
Correct.
Because the idea was remove the asphalt installed in the plans. And the reason I'm asking that is I want to make it clear, the borough engineer is out there inspecting, and he's going to have this set of plans that shows eight feet of asphalt to be removed and plantings to be installed, so I want to make sure we can convey, you know, the change that the board's considering this evening to the borough engineer, so he's clear what the approval now entails. And it may be that, you know, he may need to submit different landscaping plans so that we can sign off on it and get it over to the borough engineer.
We probably sent a letter, copied the resolution to Mr. O'Callaghan's office, so he has that.
And as per John's suggestion, if the applicant can just send in a change of landscape plan, it can become part of the permanent right. Can you do that? Will condition the administrative amendment on that? If the board is satisfied, Mr. Chairlady, your motion can be made to do administrative approval and second the motion.
We have a motion to adopt the amended plans. Motion by Mr. Councilman Beatrice, second. Mr. O'Callaghan, your call, please.
Mr. Robinson, Almenes?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Haynall?
Yes.
Boushian?
Yes.
The Councilman?
Yes.
Have you come back here? We appreciate your time. Was there someone in the audience that wanted to address something about signs? You've gotten a phone call? Who's not here, perfect. Okay, well, then we're going to move on to the land development group application. I guess what I'd like to do with this, as many of you probably know, this is the big commercial property that they are looking to develop. I know you folks only see us maybe one or two hours a month, but I want to let you know that we've been working on this for quite some time. We are known, we hold it to you as residents, we're beholden to the applicants, to do the very best that we can, to put the very best plan out here for the town and for the applicant. I just wanted to read a brief synopsis, which is the wire to their application that they put forth this evening, just to give you some type of grip of where we're at with this. And it reads, by way of background, applicant Land Approval Group, LLC, previously submitted a density variance application before the board, earlier this year, approvals for a total of 59 lots, which included 27 lots proposed as the simple townhouses with the remainder of 32 lots proposed for single-family resident dwellings. Based upon comments and concerns raised by the public, and more importantly, the concerns raised by the board, applicant has worked diligently to amend and re-engineer the alternate plan accompanying this application. Specifically, applicant has eliminated entirely the fee simple townhouses permitted under the ordinance in favor of single-family residential dwellings. Specifically, applicant has proposed a total of 51 lots, of which 48 lots are proposed for the construction of single-family residential dwellings, and remaining three lots designated for open space and stormwater management. In connection with the alternate plans, applicant has identified alternative line drawings of homes to be constructed within a development. Basically, they have reduced the size of this project by 11 units, okay? I hope this puts to rest any thoughts of loaning from housing, anything of that nature. I know some people were concerned about that. Townhouses are off the table by virtue of the discussions that we've had over the past few months. Like I said, you guys see us an hour or so a month, but we really have tried to be very diligent, as has the applicant. They've been very diligent and very cooperative in trying to put the best plan forward for this town. So, with that, I'm going to start with Mr. Rowan.
Yes, Mr. Lazook, would you have the gentlemen tonight that are going to give testimony, please stand, raise your right hand?
Yes, thank you. First, this evening I had Tomon Toulouse from the Division of Engineering as our project engineer, as well as Mr. John Butler, the professional planner.
Okay, and this gentleman is...
John Butler.
Oh, okay, I thought you were... Okay, gentlemen, any testimony? Do you solemnly swear in front of the testimony you're giving this board tonight as truthful and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Brian, if we can, you submitted a site plan along with your application with numerous attachments. If it pleases the board, I'd like to, for identification purposes, mark this applicant exhibit number one. In the entire...
Exhibit two.
The exhibit two will be applicant exhibit number two. I think I took mine as architectural one, drawings in the entirety, there are several pieces of fine marble. Board, I reviewed this application as well as our engineer, and I find that the applicant is not asking for any D variances, any use variances. What they're proposing is a permitted use under our ordinance. The applicant is proposing several bulk variances, which include a variance from our requirement that front yard setbacks be thirty feet, so that 48 of the lots, all the lots in this proposed development, will have a setback of 25 feet. The other, another bulk variance is what would be required would be for five of the lots, our ordinance requires a total square footage area of 8,000 square feet. Five of the lots in this proposed development will be less than 8,000 feet, not significantly less, it's the, I'm sure Mr. Lazook will go over the particular lots and the total areas of those proposed lots. There is a, our ordinance requires that in an R3 zone, there is a minimum lot width of 80 feet. The applicant is proposing bulk variances for 17 of those lots, which would allow those lots to be less than the required 80 feet. Once again, I'm sure Mr. Lazook, expert, will testify to those. Our ordinance requires side yard setbacks of, in aggregate, of 30 feet, with a minimum of 10 feet on any one side. Mr. Lazook is seeking, the applicant is seeking variance from that requirement for all 48 lots, and they, I believe that a few of the lots would be at a minimum 20 feet combined, is that correct?
Yes.
One lot, I think lot 13, would be 22.5 feet.
That's, that was...
Is that number?
That was a typo.
Okay.
The minimum per each lot would be 20 feet, and that is four lots.
And the rest would be 25 feet?
Yes.
The other variances are regarding the three lots that are reserved for opens, for the two for open space, and the one for, the two lots for stormwater management lots, and the one open space lot. Our ordinance required 20,000 total minimum square feet. I believe those lots, each one's going to be less than 25 feet, is that correct?
Correct.
They are the bulk variances that are being requested. Because there are no D variances, the entire board, as the mayor and Mr. Beatrice know, and a member of council on D variances, did not be permitted to vote on them, we would be able to vote on these C variances. So, we have a period that almost the entire board is in confidence to hear this application. The board, the applicant is also requesting a waiver regarding the provision and location of existing rock outcrops or watercourses not to be set forth. I guess John can talk to that, whether that waiver is...
I think the applicant should put on testimony why that waiver request is warranted.
Okay, and then the...
...for your presentation.
And then you'd have to vote on that waiver. I believe, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's basically the, and other than the subdivision that they're proposing with the total 51 lot, that is the, are the nature of the variances that are being requested this evening.
So, Rowan, I think one point of correction, there are three open space lots, two of them did not meet the 20 thousand.
Oh, okay. I'm reviewing it.
The one lot with the stormwater basin exceeds 20,000.
Okay, so then there would be only, for the open space lots?
Two.
Two, okay. I told it two, after one.
Yeah, there are three total.
Three total, okay.
Okay, former chairman of the board, Pierre Parker, Brian, the senior head of the applicant, Danny Brooks, LLC, notice has been provided, as well as an active application against the board, making much progress this time.
I reviewed those, and they were properly...
Again, just to recap, there is a, quite an extensive history with respect to this application, particularly with respect to the concerns of the board, and more importantly, the residents. I can tell you that my client has put forth a new order amount of time reconfiguring the alternate plan that you have before you receive. Following the last year in March, I believe there was a consensus that the residents, I believe to a D, did not want the townhomes, although they were permanently in the R3 zone issue. The alternate plan before you receive eliminates the townhomes, specifically the 27 that were originally proposed, and more importantly, we've eliminated the density variances where we were seeking a total of 59 units, where your ordinance would permit a maximum of 55. The application, and specifically the alternate plan before you, contemplates a total of 48 residential single-family dwellings. For the public certification, I have copies of the architectural line drawings, there's five model homes that are proposed, and they're on the brochure in front of the bills. With respect to the application, again, the use variance was eliminated, there are multiple bulk variances that are required, and they're due in large part to the unique configuration of the site, which is somewhat of a U-shaped parcel, that coupled with the environmental, sensitive environmental areas that are located to the north of the park. With respect to the actual plan details, I would defer to Mr. Toulouse to basically address not only any concerns by the board, but by the board, they issued great five, Mr. Pettit, to review them.
Mr. Toulouse?
Good evening.
Good evening.
As the client has indicated, and you're aware that this application has been out of the board, we have a lesser density, the site has frontage, a new frontage on Yisham Road, and jerk hill of the frontages on Parrot Product, which would belong to the premises of the property. We have proposing for a residential variance. In the design process, we reflected in much of the existing trees are possible, you know, to provide buffering for the existing residential, existing apartment, and also, you know, for the environment. We do have a wetland located to the east of the property, at the west of the property, that's where the basin is located. That is not an infiltration basin, it does have an aperture with a fish hatch party, so I don't want to worry that there's less chances of basin failure with the fish hatch party, because there will always be water, probably have all the water in the storms. In other than that, we have reviewed, Mr. Pettit, review letter, and I'm going to have no objection on any of the comments in his letter. There's one waiver request we would like to, for the board to consider, which is the construction of a sidewalk from both sides of the street. We have, we have proposing sidewalks everywhere on the corridor, except along the...
So, the board considered can't look down here. Could you bring out word up at the hearing, and maybe so the public can see it also?
Mr. Toulouse, if you want to testify, just speak into the mic so we can record it, please.
Okay.
Lazook, can you see that? I mean, when he's trying to complain with the sidewalk?
We have proposing sidewalks from both sides of the street, except along this section of the sidewalk, mainly because that's where the last unit is, with the exception of this one part, there is no sidewalk along this end. There's some improvements on the disinterioring and structures of the apartment, so we are requesting a waiver from the apartment, along this side of the land.
Is that coming off that side street?
Guys, listen up, we're going to have the engineer, he has a 14-page checklist here, so it would probably be a good idea, he's probably going to address all the questions you have in this checklist, so just give him a little bit of time, okay? Good, John?
As I indicated, we did prepare our letters, they're dated November 9th, our review of the application. It is 14 pages, a basket jar, and the comments are technical, mature, engineering issues that I believe can be worked out between our office and the Yisham Design Engineer's office. There are a couple of the items that I wanted to highlight, though. There are one checklist item, the checklist requires the location of existing rock outcrops, outcrops, watercourses, depression ponds, significant existing features, et cetera.
So, do you, John, what do you think? Do you tell me?
I'm sorry, I'm starting on page three of the 14 checklist. That is the one waiver request that has been requested. Can you, Mr. Toulouse, indicate why they don't believe that's necessary?
Our position is, we have proposing to provide information, I would like to defer this information until final transformation. You know, with all the many transformations, there's always a vision, and then sometimes a layout or other changes might influence the information, so we would like to defer that. We will provide it at a later date, prior to final transformation, to the board consideration.
Mr. Rowan, can we do this waiver later?
The...
Once Mr. Pettit is satisfied, can I?
Excuse me, can I ask a question? Are there any environmental conditions on the property that would be necessary to show the board at this point?
I mean, everything, I mean, we've applied survey, and everything is on the plan, I mean, the white line is subject to be on approval, we're still waiting for that, but everything else is on the plan.
Chairman, we had walked the site, and we agree that there aren't any environmental significant features other than the wetlands, so I would not have a problem recommending a waiver, but I just wanted to say testimony of the board's request.
We have, we have the property reports, everything you need?
Yes.
All the property reports are in, and everything seems to be in order with that?
All the...
The property reports, everything's...
Yes, we have, we have stormwater management report, which we have comments on, but I believe there's sufficient information in the current plans the board could act on.
Go ahead, Mr. Rowan.
Yes. Item number two is just the patch all in the ordinance that allows the board to say, you know, we're familiar with the site, and we know that there's a certain issue there, and the board can even complete it if it's necessary, but again, I would not have a problem with the board bringing this first waiver request in the application. On page four, under existing conditions of demolition plan, item number two, south corner of the property. You're showing a portion of the concrete pad to be removed, I believe that's the pump station, the bunker pump station, but there's an existing concrete drive in or out of the house, is that, is that going to remain?
That does go to remain, and the reason for that is, I believe that is all the means of access for the store, the municipal, the public force to access the pump station, and I believe that parking pad is where the water comes. So, even though we're removing the parking pad, we're maintaining that road in case that we need to get to the factory or pump station. When we work in the area of the site, it's clear that...
Uh, with the design in here. If you jump down to page nine, the shade trees that are shown on the plan, they're kind of shown here that will bring the ox. We're recommending that they be placed beyond the sidewalk, instead of between the sidewalk and curb. They can ease it, so it would be on private property, but it would be within an easement so that they can be maintained. And what that does is it prevents the, you know, the roots in the future from lifting up the sidewalk. That it becomes an ammunition for the peril. We're here with that message. And we also recommend that the species of the tree vary throughout the development. I think you're okay with that.
Number six on page ten. That's given to the body at the turmoil management basin. We would, we're about to finish our last case on one side, which is the side that's fifteen dozen measured minutes. The other side, I mean, it's heavily watered and there's no use in working.
I, I think that's okay. We just wanted to provide some buffer, you know, for residents of the, of the new development. Again, Chairman Chairwoman, the balance of the report, unless you have some, some issue or specific item, the rest of the items are engineering, so we should, you know, we just need some time to work out with the designer.
So we're going, we're going to concede that we agree in theory that everything on Mr. Pettit's list?
Absolutely.
Brian, did you have any other?
Yes, just, I, I have some quick to the board's attention. There is an O-shaped parcel at the corner of Hartford and Eastham Road. It's currently shown as a, basically an isolated lot. It would be our intention to reach out to the owner of the property on the corner of Hartford and Eastham in order to convey that L-shaped parcel to the existing corner lot. The lot, that L-shaped parcel would serve no function to be included as part of our subdivision. And it would greatly enhance the square footage of the existing corner lot. I believe that's an issue that could be deferred until final, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention.
Are there any questions from the board members for any of the applicants?
I just want to make one comment. I, I've never seen a more thorough report than Vanessa, the engineer, provided us. And I, John, thank you very much, gave me the understanding of what was going on. I did have some concerns of the existing slaking, or lack of a better word, that I knew from the base existed there. I see your trust in it.
Yeah, so as I said, this will still need to be worked out.
Is there anyone else who has any questions for the applicant? Okay.
I think if you, yeah, let's, uh, if we can bring into the, here to John's recommendations, and then a few things we have to do the final.
Speed volumes.
It sure does.
Speed volumes, and again, we're really appreciative of everyone on the board here that works so diligently, and everyone on your behalf that works so diligently. At this point?
Just one comment, I have, uh, may, maybe John can help me out here. But we, but we had a subcommittee that met with the, with the applicant.
Yes.
And we put some concerns that we had both boards together, and were able to come out with a, with an agreement. I just get to get super, super into it.
I, I think, I, I have to say, Chairman Chairwoman, I think this board, we, we, a lot of consideration with the concerns of your residents. And I know back in January or February when this first came up, residents were very concerned with, as we're members of the board, that townhouses, although they're permitted in our ordinance, that they did not want them there. And I know that placed the board, this board, in kind of a quandary because the board is opposed with the duty to enforce the ordinance, but you knew your, your, a number of your residents were, were not happy with that. And you, you came up with a solution, and so did the developer to, you know, financially walk away with the benefit that he may be able to have by putting big density in there in townhouses. And it goes to show the cooperation between the applicant and the buyer.
Mr. Ward, Mr. Butler, thank you as well. You testified this evening by making very well involving this plan from John, so thank you. At this point, John, I'd like to open up the meeting to the public. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this application only. Approach the microphones, state their address, and take a comment, please. Yo, look, that microphone's not working, sir.
Hello, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is John McMurtry. I live 415 Sheffield Court. And I just looked at the site plan and, uh, I'm concerned with where the entrance into this development is across from Sheffield Court. And the two long distances of the street of the new development, where there's no sidewalks again. I asked, there was a line on the plan, and I asked Mr. Butler if there were sidewalks, and he said, no. We've got so many people walking in the street right now from the apartment. We have no sidewalks on Hartford Drive. Previous development was allowed to go this far away from the curbs. Sherrington, there's no sidewalks. But we got a shot down to put at least a block and a half or so of sidewalks in on both sides of the entrance. On Hartford Drive.
John, you want me to turn that in?
Yeah, you're monitoring it.
Get it right here. This line I thought maybe, it looks like, it's just like on Sheffield Court. Where it looks like the existing sidewalk from development makes the turn and then stops.
So you're looking for a sidewalk on Hartford Drive?
Sidewalk on Hartford Drive. So like I said, we have so many people in the street now walking to the strip mall, to the avenue, to that shopping cart.
And you're talking about just from Hartford Drive to Eastham? You obviously have a little property.
Unless, there's no room on the opposite side of Sheffield, where Sherrington was built. Like I said, of course, there's only this much room between the fences and the curb.
All right, Mr. Ward, we will be agreeable to provide. Sir?
Thank you.
Sir, does she listen?
Yeah, he said, you see, we don't talk. And I look at your traffic. Right now, when you come down Eastham Road to make a left or a right on the Hartford Drive, it's ridiculous. I, for the last couple of years ago, since the Actley opened back up, I've been cutting through the Actley lot, going down through the strip stores to get to Hartford Drive to build. Now, on both sides of Eastham Road, in both directions, it's wide enough where you can put a left turn light to go into Hartford Drive. There's enough room, you know, left turn only. I, I've come home and had to wait through three or four red lights on Eastham Road, with no, there's enough room for two lanes. When everybody just want to continue to the white horse flight station to divide them. So I'm back ten, fifteen, twenty bars.
To make turn.
To make a left. It's the same thing coming up Eastham Road the other way. There's enough room to make a right lane.
John, is that a county road?
Yes.
Yes, county.
That's not within our purview, sir.
Well, I was under the impression that when Sherrington was built, the debt builder had to put dead stops on the red light inner.
I put an inch of that.
Okay, well, now I'll bring it up at the, the regular borough meeting.
But that's a county road.
Eastham, Eastham Road is a county.
Yeah, I know.
Now, I, and then the other, I brought up on Sugar Avenue on Eastham Road previously at the borough meeting where there wasn't a left turn only way. So what was happening was, you know, people wanted to make a left on the sugar, and then the people behind them that wanted to go straight would pass it on the right. So I put that up at the borough meeting previously, and they put the left turn only light on, and they made the left turn only lane. So we have to bring it up here, or at the borough meeting at that time.
Well, John, I guess that would have to be brought up to Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah, I know, I know this is the right way.
The borough meeting that the borough has in your statement.
No, they, they didn't. But like I said, I brought it up at one borough meeting, and wound up being put in, put on Sugar. And the other page spot is the left border of the Actley.
Well, Mr. Rowley, I would mean, what?
Obviously, any, the board may grant is subject to an outside agency agreement, including the county county board.
So I guess you, Mr. Rowley?
Well, yeah, I mean, the, you have an application for the county county board, uh, for review at least.
That would be submitted.
You think they approve, and so if they felt there was a need or, and that would be, we can't, obviously, we can't talk.
Is there, there rehearsing a call, Ken?
I think you should probably just have him, pop them, you know, someone at the, uh, at the borough.
At the borough, now, so, yeah, we don't have jurisdiction to, you know, say how the traffic, uh, off like, how it has to be considered. And I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate his concern.
Quite.
Well, it's been so big, you know, like I said, the other page spot, it's spotted for, you know, anybody who has fallen to account. Where you make the left to go into the Actley, I think it's the same thing. People would know, when people stop to make the left to go into the Actley, everyone don't put on their turn signal so that people behind them stop. And then they go to the right lane. I'm a resident, so I know they're stopping to make a left to go into the Actley, where I'm going to go straight. I say to them, right now, here's a guy, you know, cutting out in front of me, so it's forcing people to pass on a right. More free stops, so if anybody takes into consideration, I mean, uh, free stops.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Is there anyone else who can follow, who can speak, yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Chairwoman, someone's coming down already.
That's all right, I can move.
You can leave?
No, you can go. I'll, I'll go in.
Angela Peterson, we've done a green road in Romney. And my biggest concern is the wetlands, my biggest concern. And at the back of that property, I know it goes down that hill, and there is a free-running stream. It starts at the water company, and it goes all the way to Eastham Road. And I know any time that the water tank is flushed, that's how they do it, and thousands of gallons of water goes through there. But that itself is a straight, red, free-running stream. Now, I know nobody's interested in this, but I'm going to tell you anyway. There are a pair of golden eagles nesting there, apparently fountains. We have red cover fountains. We see them every day in our yards, all these birds. So I know that this is one accessible spot, because they have enough they go to. And I am concerned about the wetlands more than the houses.
How does that one, that application negatively impact that area?
The borough, any municipality in the state of New Jersey has no jurisdiction over the wetlands. It's purely under the jurisdiction of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. The applicant is required to get a lot of interpretation to identify the limits of the wetlands, to identify what the required buffer is. And when that application is submitted to the state, it is sent to the Threatened, Endangered Species Portion of D E P. So all the different offices in D E P have a chance to review it to make sure that there's no issues associated with threatened endangered species or other aspects of the wetlands, and that's how they determine what the buffer is. So the applicant has submitted a plan assuming a certain buffer. And we have to get that, that documentation back from the state saying that that's what it is, that's what the borough has to rely upon. They then have to submit for general permits for that transition area, averaging, or stormwater outfalls. But we have, the borough has no jurisdiction in that regard. It's purely up to the D E P.
Well, you're certainly right, Larry, it's the D E P who's liable.
Is your intention to fill in that stream, that problem, is that your intention?
From our, from our, going near the stream, we're staying about fifty feet away from the stream. And the only thing we're going there is the basic, the stormwater management basin, so, you know, that is what we do. Uh, the back of the property, we took the, the majority of this area here, uh, all of the, uh, when we disturbed. There are some disturbances in, in, in this area here because of the road, but that is another disturbance. All the back, what I mean, the same.
Okay, because that used to be all wetlands back in there, and when the Hartford Arms was built, that was all filled in. Because I've been there fifty-one years, and I know it for a fact.
And so for you to note that the white ground area was depicted.
Yes.
That is the actual stormwater basin. That lot entails roughly two and a half acres.
So that, that'll be similar to the stormwater basin, which is up near the Actley in front of the, the shopping center there. They have a fence around it and trees and plants, and there are, there is a lot of wildlife in there.
It's not going to be exactly the same, but that is for the storm.
Similar to that.
Similar to that.
And applicant can directly access to the wetlands, we identify on the plan.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, John. Yes, ma'am?
Christine Mazzana, and I live at nine oh one East Eastham Road. And my concern is, my house is right next to the dirt road that they used to go, the pumping station, the police patrol it. Is that becoming a pumping road? I'm real confused about, when you're talking about these roads coming off of Eastham Road.
So I, do you have a question, ma'am? I think you should turn it out the access road that.
To the pumping station, not where the gates are, that's one dirt road that's next to my house.
That would not be.
It's not.
It can remain the same. We're not, I mean, we're not moving it. It's going to stay unless the potential request it to be moved. We're not modifying it. Whatever is there is going to stay there.
Okay. And the residents of the development will not have access to, to the development by that route.
Okay, that was.
That essentially what exists today is what will remain for the benefit of the county share of our current power.
Yeah, I mean, how the terms, there's a big pot of grass behind me that I don't know, is there houses going in that section? That was my next question. Because I'm a little confused about the divestment.
Um, that one should depict exactly where your house is located.
Is there a house? Which side of your house is the road?
I'm facing Eastham, I'm right on Eastham.
It's, now, face your house, which side, where's the road?
The road, if I'm facing my house, the road is on the left.
This is your house?
Okay.
Yes, yes, that's not our land.
That's not your lands, okay. Okay, that's my question. Okay, so that, that stays the same, um, so are you saying that the road that is a little down further, where the gates are, is going to be the public road of Eastham?
There's, there's no access to those properties, and you have to.
And that's only through Hartford?
Only through Hartford, yeah, from the side street.
As it stands now, there is an easement on the Eastham that you, you realize that a public person.
Right.
That will remain, but residents, particularly residents of this development will not have access to the development from Eastham Road. So.
All right, and I, I'm backing up the woman, we got the wildlife, I believe, there's turkeys back in here, and it'd be no shame to do that. And also the gentleman got the traffic, there's a lot, oh, accidents happen in one Eastham, at the length of Hartford. Three or four bad accidents have happened already, so I don't know if this will make more traffic, but that is a very dangerous form.
I believe one option that the town, the borough may have with respect to the license is if you're, um, and you're possibly proposing a tiny study to the town as to whether we simulate the body.
Mr. Rowley, would you be willing to react to this letter request to, um, Mr. Bott? Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll react to a reply letter to the power solicitor um, to ask for a path to study, basically, to see if there's any effect can be done with those laws.
Okay, appreciate that.
Is there existing light right now on Hartford?
Yes.
Yes.
One Eastham, yeah. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Ward, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, board. My name is James Keenan. I live at twenty-nine seventy-six Davis Road in Romney. Is the developer proposing to put any kind of private fencing, uh, privacy fence along the back of their new property to protect the houses that exist on Davis Road?
I would not. Um, I, I mean, there's a, I have a reason for it. Um, there's a significant big difference. Actually, on this side of the property, the fence won't do anything. I mean, outside pretty much is lower than their side, so.
Well, that still, that still doesn't protect the existing residents from people trying to cut through their yards. So they did it on Sherrington, um, on Hartford Drive. So I certainly think if developers going to anticipate, um, this project, that they should provide private, private fencing for the residents that live along Davis Road.
Well, I mean, it's not a requirement of this applicant to do that, so are you, are you more concerned with, with runoff? What, what are you thinking?
No, I'm concerned about residents, um, encroaching into the yards of the residents that live on Davis Road.
Well, I think there's a, and John, first of all, I think there's a pretty good-sized buffer between the properties, is there not?
Well, they're already asking for a reduced, um, space variance.
Where are we at, John?
You can see the buffer behind, you know, the, the light colored green is where the new development is. And if you look at the grading plan, there's probably a six to eight foot drop between where the existing ground is and where the new homes are going to be, you know, along that, that part of the, of the development. If you, if you put a fence in, and do the maintenance, it's coming on private property, um, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what your concern is as far as people accessing.
Well, my concern is that people with their backyard, animals, uh, individuals, you know, leaving your yard and coming in to the backs of our property.
Well, I, I really think, um.
There's a fence there now, all the way along there.
What does that mean?
There's a fence along there now. It should be replaced.
Is that, is that fence on your property?
I don't know whose property it is on.
I mean, there's, there's nothing really stopping anyone from, in Sherrington, from putting up a fence in their yard or, or that concern, but I can't imagine that when we develop this property, it's going to create more wildlife and more animals in there. I think it's the contrary, it's going to actually be displaced a little bit, you know? And that's what the police are for. I mean, that's what the police are for, if we have a problem, that's an enforcement issue.
Well, we've already had problems. Um, the other evening, uh, there was a gentleman in my wife's car. You know, so what I'm saying is, if those people want to develop that area, then they should provide a fence, just like they have along the houses on Hartford Drive. All them houses have fencing.
Well, right now, it's not a requirement that had been set to work for this application.
Well, how would you say, if you're, if you're, your work is, your work is obviously not required. I, I would agree with the gentleman, if they had a different pattern, we could, if our residential development, if, if, if commercial were in such overuse, and that, that would be approved, however, then we consider this as a residential, so. Again, given the great differential, I just, we cannot be.
Oh, it can do something, when you come up.
Well, they're asking, they're asking for us to approve, um, them to increase the number of houses in, uh, non-conformance to the borough's regulations as far as the square footage. So if they want to build, um, additional homes in a lesser area that's required, then they should provide a fence.
Thank you.
I think the board should take it under consideration.
Okay, good, thank you very much. Anyone else?
I just had one question.
My name is Francine Keenan, twenty-nine seventy-six Davis Road. I'm concerned with where these new homes are going to go, what the impact traffic-wise is going to mean to Davis Road. Right point you back this morning, I left my house ten o'clock to go to the post office to get my mail. It took me ten minutes to get out of my driveway. That's how much traffic is on that road right now. You put forty-eight new homes there, where are those people going to exit and enter? Are they going to be on Davis? Am I going to have to wait for them to clear so I can get out of my driveway?
There is no access on Davis. The access only on Hartford Drive. There is no access on Davis.
Can you show me on there where ours going Hartford?
You have one there?
This is Hartford. This is, this is Davis, I believe. The only guardways is there, across from Sheffield Court.
This, where's Davis?
This is Davis.
Okay, and where is Hartford Arms, the apartments?
These are the apartments.
Okay, in respect to where Davis Road is, where the new homes are going to go, what, how many square foot are we saying? How far is that, the development is starting, yes?
Uh, we do have to go through Mark's brick, because if you came in, if you committed to the development, you're going to be right, travel through Mark's.
I don't think you understand me. If I'm in my backyard on my house on Davis Road, and I'm in the very end of the yard, am I going to be able to see the new homes?
Yes.
Okay, and how far would that home be from the back of my yard? I mean, because right now where my yard is, I could throw a stone and hit the apartment complex.
My guess is more than a hundred feet.
Yeah. Property, property is, is this one here?
Is this your property?
This is your property, here.
All right, we're twenty-nine seventy-six.
I don't have the address, you can point out where you.
Well, this, right here, is that tree or should it be?
This is Davis. Is this your house? This is the closest house to the apartment, it's right behind me.
How far is the border of Davis?
And Hartford, three houses.
One, two, three, so it's probably this one here. You have, which might, you have like a shed, a couple cars in the back, that's an old picture, but. I mean, regardless, this, this.
Is this closer to Davis?
Yeah, well, it's my driveway, that, um.
From the house, from the house.
It's my driveway.
This is it, from the house to, to the apartment, it's about two hundred feet. I mean, the, the houses from Davis Drive have been blocked.
Uh, this is my personal opinion. Your new home, the plans look great, quite frankly, I wouldn't want my backyard in a apartment complex.
Anyone else, ma'am, who should this be? At this point, John, I'll entertain the motion to close the whole portion of the meeting. Motion made by Mr. Heath, seconded by Mayor Calvados. Mr. Rowley, do you have a resolution for additional preliminary approval?
See, I think what would be proper tonight would be a motion, if this is a board, for additional preliminary approval, based on the representations that the applicant is going to satisfy the, that the comments, uh, contain in the engineer's letter dated November ninth, two thousand and twelve, that the board is bringing a waiver, not a requirement, but a waiver, from what I understand, of the applicant, uh, providing location of any existing app, props, high points, workforce, as depression, fines, warrants, decrees, et cetera. The, um, the approval will also be conditioned on the fact that the applicant has indicated that they will extend the sidewalks along the east side of Hartford Drive from the proposed development to connect it with, uh, uh, Eastham, uh, Road. Does that also go along the other side of that, of the, the small portions? No, I believe they, they were, the applicant was asking for a waiver, a waiver from the other side. If you can turn that over, John, if he finds it, it'll be, just for the, if he can just go exactly where he's asking we for the. There's, there's different things here. We asked them to add sidewalk along Hartford. They're going to do that. Is it going to be on the side of the road as well? Taking the, the property line to the park. That was, I understand that where, where the plan shows the.
That was my understanding, where the plan shows the cut walls along the lot, there wouldn't be side of them.
So if you leave the mall, nobody here...
Yeah, you're, okay, well, well, friends.
And the waiver is to extend sidewalk along the upper, the north side of the roadway in this area here to the first...
There's a waiver, there's not going to happen.
That's a question, that's a nice question on the board, you have to decide.
I mean, if you wanted to refer that to file, uh, okay. Let this form, again, they agreed to extend the, the provided sidewalk along the west side. And the issue of the other sidewalk control, we have filed. Uh, the applicant is also indicated that they will agree to de-restrict, um, all the units so that at least one garage has to be maintained. So they did not be converted, a one-barge garage, you cannot be converted into a living space. A two-barge garage could, but only limited to one garage, which they would present to the solicitor for my, my...
Sure. That's up to the, you know, the disposition of the access to the store family.
Now, the, the approval that you is granting, since I think additional preliminary approval would be for a fifty-one lot subdivision. Change of division, forty-eight units, three, uh, lots would be residential in nature. One lot would be for the purpose of stormwater management, and two lots would be for the purpose of open space. You would be voting that in order to promote uniformity throughout the, the, uh, proposed development, to give each lot a front yard variance where thirty feet is required to permit the houses to be built within twenty sites. There would also be voting on, uh, to grant a varying, a bulk variance regarding five of the proposed subdivided lots to permit a lot size less than eight thousand feet. I believe the plans refer to a special square footage of one of those particular lots. You would also be giving a variance to seventeen of the proposed lots regarding the, uh, in order to reduce the width of those lots, on the applicant's plan, where eighty feet frontage is required by our ordinance to permit seventeen of those lots to be, have a lot frontage just less than that. Um, you're also, would be granting, according to the variance to each of the forty-eight lots regarding the side yard requirements. Our side yard order requirements require an aggregate of thirty feet with a minimum of ten feet of each, on each side. They have met the minimum requirement on each lot, but the aggregate cannot be, is not being provided for all forty-eight. Thirty is required, some of the lots, I believe, are twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, and the rest, the elements are twenty. So there is, that, that's, that is more or less, um, well, that, that, they would be the, the variances that would be, uh, to be voted. The board has the right to take into consideration the totality of the plan developed, that if the variants are requested or not subject to substantial deviation to our ordinance and to what the applicant's providing, to promote uniformity. The, uh, the board also has the right to, to, uh, grant, or, uh, a variance in such a condition where there has been a compromise or a waiver of rights under our ordinance by an applicant. In order, in other words, something being given up in order to obtain something else that's not in substantial detriment to the community or to our, our ordinance at all. So that's what you would be voting on tonight, is, is, uh, again, it's preliminary approval, condition on, the condition set forth in John's letter, set forth on the conditions that the, the applicant has agreed to do tonight. And of course, condition on any outside approvals that they may require, either from DPD, county, CCMU, or any other, you know, authorities that are required, and of which we have the approval.
Just one clarification, if the board were to grant approval, the applicant would be responsible on the application, this complicated, the testing, as well as the proposed development.
Was there any other questions from any board members before we entertain the motion? Okay, is there, is there a motion on the floor to grant additional preliminary, slight plan approval with applicant? Motion made by Mr. Deitch, second, seconded by Ms. Bushen, O'Callaghan.
Calvadas? Deitch?
Yes.
Lane number?
Yes.
Bushen?
Yes.
Jowski?
Yeah.
Dunn? Waltherly?
Yes.
Okay, fellows, congratulations, you're all wishing the best. We're still in session, hi, still in session here, thank you. Okay, Mr. Rowley, did you want to, uh, take care of the resolution?
Yes, sir. Madam Chairlady, there is a resolution that we're asked to act on tonight, a resolution claiming to be worth the borough of Romney, county, and county of New Jersey recommending that the mayor and borough council amend the land use development ordinance of the borough of Romney pursuant to the recommendation of Bach Engineers, Bach Associates Engineers. I believe that was discussed at the last open meeting. Uh, I presented a, a resolution to June, and we asked June to just, if she could attach there too, uh, Mr. Bach's recommendations, and that the board act favorably on this, so we could pay some, can't answer for their ultimate review and, and...
Will you roll again?
Calvadas?
Yes.
Deitch? Lane number?
Yes.
Bushen?
Yes.
Or Tynan? Jowski?
Yeah.
Dunn?
Yes.
Yes.
June, are there any other questions? Do we have any other old business? There are any other new business? Mayor intended motion to adjourn?